The meeting will please come to order. And would all town meeting members come down in front, in the front part of the auditorium and not in the back? And I'm going to request that all here tonight shut off their phones immediately, please. We do not want people on their phones during this meeting. It's a serious business. I'm going to, there's quite a few of the articles tonight are going to require a two-thirds vote. And so I'm going to have to have counters right here. I've got Mitchell and Pappas, please come forward. And in the middle, I've got Anderson and Kosky. And over here, I have O'Day and Feldman. Would you please come forward to be sworn? It's not Feldman. Where is Feldman? I thought you were over there. There you are, okay. Yes. Come on. Okay, just one or two quick things. For new members, the handbook for town meeting is online. And there are three rules that I wish to bring to your attention this evening. The hallmark of town meeting has always been civility. We address articles, proposals, and principles. We don't address one another. Second, do not shout out. Do not line up at the microphone. Raise your hand, and I will call on you, okay? So stay in your seat until I do so. On any given article, you may speak only twice, and the second time is after other members have spoken once. And those are the three basic rules. Now, the one thing you could do, because the moderator can make a mistake, somebody could call out point of order, obviously. But that's a different thing entirely. All right, so, Article One. To hear the report of the Finance Committee, other town offices and committees, or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Hussey.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. I'm actually rewriting this on the go here, so please bear with me. When town meeting last met in May, you approved the $55.6 million budget for fiscal 2015. In the five months since then, that annual town meeting funding for the 2015 budget from Beacon Hill and several other sources have been finalized, with only minor changes from the annual town meeting estimates. Our town CFO will have a presentation with highlights and modifications to the 2015 budget. Looking forward, the Finance Committee in the next several weeks will be meeting with the Town Manager and Board of Selectmen to go over a couple of recent issues that have come up. And this is including the Southhold Road land issue, and also really multiple budget issues. They're going to make the next budget process rather dynamic. So please stay tuned to your TVs, or feel free to come to Town Hall for those. Let's see. Those are my recent revisions. Regarding the town warrant articles, Finance Committee takes the following positions. Articles two through 18, we do recommend approval. And I have a couple of comments on them. Article two makes minor adjustments to the operating budget. However, $7,500 will be added to the Youth Commission operating budget with other offsetting reductions, and this will result in a net change of only $500 in the total operating budget. Articles five through nine finalize changes in the CIP to repurpose school capital funds as previously outlined and discussed as part of the middle school project and reconfiguring the elementary schools. Article 10 involves minor land taking required to widen West Street for the New Auburn Middle School. Article 12 and Articles 14 through 18 repurpose previously approved CIP and warrant articles within the DPW for various but unrelated needs. Article 13 adds $200,000 to the stabilization fund. Articles 19 through 21, we also recommend approval. Articles 22 and 23, we defer to the petitioners, which is what we traditionally do regarding street acceptances, despite some known financial impacts to adding streets to the town. Regarding the other articles, there were a couple I didn't mention. They're either self-explanatory, or I would prefer to defer to the petitioner for additional explanation and comments on them. Respectfully submitted, Kevin Hussey, Chair Finance Committee, and Kavanaugh Vice Chair, James Bonifilio, Ed Coleman, Kimberly Holstrom, Christopher Orion. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay. We will now hear from the Selectmen. Ms. Goodrich.
Good evening, town meeting members, and thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm going to be brief here, as Chairman Hussey stated. The CFO will be doing a presentation tonight. And having said that, the Board of Selectmen make the following recommendations. On Article two, the Board of Selectmen met prior to this meeting and voted to recommend approval. Articles three through 22, the Board of Selectmen recommend approvals. And also on Article 23, it's action that we took prior to this meeting tonight, and the Board did recommend approval on that article as well, submitted by myself as chairman, Ken Holstrom Vice Chairman, Steve Simonian, Denise Brotherton, and Daniel Carpenter. And before I finish, as town meeting members, I want to make you aware that we are hosting a public hearing on October 27. The time will be determined to discuss a 61A notice of sale of Southhold Road property. This is in accordance with Mass General Law. I'm letting town meeting members know that because this matter may come before town meeting, a special town meeting may be scheduled on or about December 2nd to handle this matter in accordance with Mass General Law. And again, October 27, a public hearing regarding the 61A notice of sale of Southhold Road property. Thank you, and have a good town meeting.
Thank you, Dorine.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, members of the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and School Committee, I thank you for the opportunity to provide for you a brief update on the status of the Auburn Public Schools, as well as provide a brief explanation about the warrant articles before you. This past spring, actually starting last fall, we engaged in a process to determine a new strategic plan for the Auburn Public Schools. If you've not yet taken the opportunity to do so, I would encourage you to visit our website. But noted on here are the shared values that we determined as a team. That plan has been written and accepted by the School Committee as of this past spring. Our decisions are always made based on students and what is in their best interest. We have high expectations for all. We always strive to provide safe and respectful environments. We base our needs based on data. We look to see what does the data tell us, and how can we improve the achievement of our students. We seek equitable opportunities for all, and we are dedicated, as you have heard me say previously, to continuous improvement. So a quick overview, and I think it's important, the logo that is there, the words have special meaning, that the Auburn Public Schools, it's honoring tradition while embracing the future. And you'll hear later this evening when Mr. Imzey, our SBC Chairman, provides you an update regarding the new middle school project to the right, this is a rendering of one of the classrooms in that new school. So in terms of MCAS, which is only one measure by which we determine how our students are faring, but it certainly is one of the most public ones, the goal for that program, very generally speaking, is to increase the number of students scoring in the advanced and proficient categories, while likewise reducing the number of students scoring in Needs Improvement and Warning. I'm happy to report that in this most recent assessment given in the spring of 2014, that in 16 of the 17 areas, and this is looking at our advanced and proficient students only, they did as well as or better than their peers across the Commonwealth. Additionally, in 12 of the 24 different categories, grade levels, and departments that were tested, there were actually half of them that were in the top third across the Commonwealth, and 75% of those were actually in the top 25% or better. Some brief highlights, the JV third grade students in math were in the top 11%, with their counterparts at fifth grade being in the top 10%. And these are compared to peers across Massachusetts. PAC third grade students in terms of math scored in the top 13%, and then in the top 18% in terms of English Language Arts. 82% of our Auburn Middle School eighth graders scored advanced or proficient in English Language Arts. And at the high school, in terms of advanced and proficient, 96% in English, 91% in math, and 89% in science and technology. And these are just a few brief snippets to share with you. This work happens, though, and this achievement happens based on a lot of work that happens behind the scenes. We have curriculum teams that are constantly working to strengthen and revise our curriculum to be sure it is the most up-to-date possible. We provide professional development to our teachers that is high quality. And we've had it just this past summer and late into the spring of last year, trainings on both advanced placement as well as pre-AP that we brought down as low as fifth grade, keys to literacy. We've done technology trainings, and a heavy emphasis on trainings for co-teaching. We have a strong mentoring and induction program. Our new teachers require our support. The research is very clear that unless teachers are well-supported in the first few years as an induction into their career, they're likely or potentially likely to leave, and we certainly don't want that to happen. We have a goal of maintaining environments in which our students and our staffs can work, learn, grow, and thrive. And I thank our safety advisory team comprised of school, fire, and police personnel who meet regularly to provide updates and make recommendations. And we have PBIS, a positive behavior supports through eighth grade, and work with Dr. Potteed at the high school. We're committed to maintaining open communication and collaboration with our students' families, as well as with all of you in the greater Auburn community. We share good news through the Facebook. We have our parent portal. As long with transition programs, we have Ice Cream Socials, Rocket's Review. The Auburn Mass Daily is great about sharing many of the highlights of great things happening in the schools. We have district newsletters that are sent home, and one-call, email, and telephones, as well as having strong partnerships, not only with all of the town departments, but also with Auburn Youth and Family Services, as well as our students providing community service to the members of the Auburn community, in appreciation for the support we receive from all of you. We aggressively seek out grants, and listed here is a total approximately $765,000 in grants, most notably the IDEA, the Chapter 240 grant, we call it, for special education, but also Title I Teacher Quality, Pre-AP, and Race to the Top. We've been heavily involved with the Mass Mathematics and Science Initiative, MIMZI for short, and that's really for the expansion of advanced placement. Whereas just a couple of short years ago, we had less than 100 students taking advanced placement courses. This year and last, we had in the high 300s, and we now offer 17 different AP courses, and some of those I've noted on here, AP Physics, AP Chemistry, AP English Lit, AP English Language, World History, Studio Art, US History, as well as the others noted. We promote college and career across all grade levels. We have a college day each year. We hang pendants in our schools. We do ready-step assessment at the high school to really assess our students on how they're doing and how we can change what we're doing to help them progress even more. We have college seminar now across all of our high school grade levels. We have collaborations with area colleges. We did a pilot last year with Quinn-Sigumon Community College, and we do college readiness presentations to staff, students, and parents. We're really committed to the effective integration of technology, and I'm pleased to report that with your support, we have a one-to-one iPad initiative at grades eight and nine next, this year, to be expanded next year through grades six through 12. I look forward to sharing with you at an upcoming town meeting, the anecdotal data that we collect from students and families on the impact of that, and then hopefully in years moving forward, the actual impact that we can see in terms of students' achievements. Some of the equipment and software that we have in place and actually continue to maintain, we have assistments to really look at our math students' work and their achievement that they are earning, everyday mathematics, Read Live. We have iPads available, as well as Bright Links and laptop carts. We have a heavy emphasis or district focus on STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, but certainly not at the exclusion of the arts. We are quick to point out our students, hopefully you've had the opportunity to see the Rocket Marching Band. If not, I would encourage you to try and do so. And we have students who win awards both musically and artistically at an ever-increasing level. Some of our STEM activities, we have a STEM Summer Camp, a Young Engineers Club that runs during the year, environmental engineering at the high school, and engineering at elementary at elementary. Some of these recent colleges' acceptances, I share these with you in pride for the students who earned the ability to be accepted to these colleges, but also, I think, as a school community and the greater Auburn community, to be proud of the colleges to which our students are being accepted, because it's indicative of the support that they receive not only from the teachers and staff within our schools, but from all of you as town meeting and Auburn community members. Some very notable distinctions that have happened of late, one of our schools has been designated as a National Blue Ribbon School, one of only 337 across the nation. Two have been recognized as commendation schools, two of only 42 from across the Commonwealth. And we have two innovation schools. We have the STEM Academy and the Freshman Academy. We continue with our Etta Vow system, and the most recent additions to that are district-determined measures, which is really the state's way of saying, we're going to look at how students are faring on the assessments that we give them, and make changes so that they can continue to improve with those. But most importantly, it's about the ongoing conversations that we have about each and every individual child. Our goal is to have each of them achieve at their full potential. Collaboration, this is an important slide. It really does make us stronger, and this is a belief that is shared across the town. We have a great collaboration with the town, and we believe, as do they, that when we work together, things, more things can be accomplished, and everyone wins from that. We have reciprocal relationships from many town departments, whether it's the building of the press box, the maintenance of our grounds, or the like. The safety advisory team, as I mentioned previously. The Fire Department supports us with trainings, the Police Department with the School Resource Officer, and the mutually respectful discussions that happen with the town's administration. Everyone's striving and moving in the same direction. There are challenges that remain, and they always will, but being committed to continuous improvement and excellence as we are, we take these head-on. We do see that in some of our subgroups, particularly our special education or low-income, and those are designations made by the Department of Education, that those students are not faring as well as their counterparts. And we're really trying to tackle that, most notably with our co-teaching training that we're providing. We're now in its third year, and we're starting to really see strong benefits from that. And although seven out of the 17 grade levels or subjects saw an increase in advanced and proficient, we want to see that in every one of the categories provided. Substituting the word "teachers," this is a quote that I have used often, it hangs above my desk, and I believe in it wholeheartedly, "that districts, so we could expand it to communities, who believe in students' ability, actually created atmosphere in which it becomes easier to succeed." That's certainly what we believe in the Auburn Public Schools, and with your support, we intend to continue to do just that. As noted, our commitment to continuous improvement is a mutually shared goal. We all want the very best for our students. Couple of other quick updates. The master plan team, we came to you back in May and saw it, repurposing of some CIP funds. And through your approval of that, we have begun some renovations to what we refer to in this regard as the 10 Swanson Road property, the current Auburn Middle School. You see here pictures of the expanded parking lot. This was in the summer, not quite yet done, and the installation of the playground, because our grades three to five students will move there in the fall. The next phases of their work, we're working on an expansion of the kitchen area. Currently, right now, some of the equipment, most notably the freezer, needs to be outside. We're installing student bathrooms, handicap accessible on the lower level. A staff lunchroom and work area is being installed. We're painting the classroom. We're revamping the office area, upgrading the HVAC system, updating the bathrooms, expanding the vestibule area to include security doors and a much larger space, with carpet installed in the auditorium. The intention, as shared with you previously, is to have the grades three to five students, JV and PAC, to go and be educated at 10 Swanson Road next fall. Additionally, the Mary D students will be transferring to the Package Hogs School next year, so we have work underway there, based on approvals you've previously given. We'll be updating the HVAC system, the student bathrooms, upgrading the parking lot, as well as the playground area, and some other facelift items, I would call them. We also have, and you have articles before you this evening, five through nine, for the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program. As you can see, we have an awful lot taking place in terms of buildings and improvements, but we didn't want to turn down this opportunity to reach out to MSBA to potentially save the Auburn community between $600,000 and $1 million. These will be for needed repairs, and as noted here in their statement, it's really, these funds are for the preservation of existing assets by performing energy-efficient and cost-saving upgrades. What we have been invited into this program to do is to replace the roof in the partial boiler at the middle school, as well as the roof at Bryn Mawr School. And as noted, with your approval, to repurpose some funds from previously approved CIP, we're just looking to transfer funds, not asking for additional. There is the potential to save between the $600,000 and $1 million, and that variability comes from, we have not yet gone out to bid, we don't know what the cost will be for this, but MSBA intends to reimburse approximately 50% of the total cost of these projects. Our goal remains the same, is to provide a safe and healthy environment for our students and staff to work and learn and grow and thrive. And I thank you very much, as always, for your consideration of those. Brief overview of our articles, the first one is to seek your approval of $623 for homeless transportation. The district actually paid out $1,225 to transport, in most cases, it was students who had become homeless while students of ours moved to a shelter outside of Auburn, and they have the right to return to our schools to maintain some consistency and balance in their lives. Also seeking approval for you, this is in a, funds for school restitution, just to transfer it for the use, for the Package Hogs. We want to use this money, this $20,000, to reduce the size of the, to lower the equipment that's at the Package Hogs playground, as well as add some swings and expand it so it's appropriate for grades K to 2. Articles five through nine, as I mentioned, is for the accelerated repair, to replace the roofs at Auburn Middle and Bryn Mawr School, excuse me, as well as a partial boiler at Auburn Middle School. In Article 10, Mr. Imzey will address, but this has to do with the middle school project. So I do thank you for your support, and on behalf of the entire district, as the proud superintendent of schools, I commit to continuing to do our very best, not only to maintain our commitment with each of you as town meeting members in the Auburn community, but to do our very best by our students. This is a quick photo of Auburn Middle School, but not to take away from Mr. Imzey. I do just want to take this opportunity to thank you all once again for your support. If you've not been by West Street or Route 12, changes are made to that new facility each and every day, and we do remain on time and on budget. So thank you very much for your support.
Dr. Brunel. Mr. Imzey.
I'm Mark Imzey. I'm the chairman of the School Buildings Committee here in Auburn, and I've been working hard with Dr. Brunel and the rest of the committee on our project here. As you remember, a year and a half ago, we came for the overall project funding of the school. It included improvements to West Street, but at the time, we didn't have a very good, fully vetted-out design, so in terms of the takings and land orientations, we didn't know at the time what we had to do. As Dr. Brunel said, we're on schedule, we're on budget, we're not seeking any additional funds, it's just a procedural that the land takings have to be approved through the town meeting. So as you recall, there was concern about the middle school project adding to the traffic on West Street. And what we added into the project was widening West Street from the western edge of the project all the way to the Southbridge Street intersection to three lanes with dedicated left lane turns at either end. We also have sidewalk that runs from the school entrance driveway all the way down to the Southbridge Interchange, and then there's utility pole relocations and stuff. Since we've been working hard on the improvements and stuff, and it's all happening from the north side down, there's no land takings on the north side where all the residents are. It's only temporary easements along their landscaped areas and their driveways where they're regrading to match the geometry of the new road. This is the western half of the West Street from the western end of where the project starts heading down. And what we end up on this end is, we end up with a dedicated left turn into the project. This is the main entrance into the project with a dedicated left turn. The Fire Department entrance is right here. The employee entrance for their parking lot has been closed, and they're going to come in through the apparatus driveway and into this side here, so we reduce the number of openings on the street. I know you can't see it really well, but right along about this line is what the existing right-of-way for the West Street. It stays there. We moved to the south. The existing right-of-way is along this way on the south side, and the new one will be down here. What benefits us most on this whole project, and you'll see from the value of the land takings, that more than half of the land that is taken is town land, just going from school use to part of the roadway work. As we move east, you'll see that where the Randall School entrance is, it changes to a left lane, dedicated to the, dedicated left turn lane to Southbridge Street heading eastbound. And then the right turn, the right lane is a left lane straight through and a right turn lane, along with the sidewalk going all the way down to the corner and meeting up with the Southbridge Street sidewalks. Along with this, there's also a little bit of a, there'll be probably some signal timing changes as we work with Mass DOT on that, as well as, right now, the signal system there is on just an opticon system for the Fire Department, but it's a line of sight, so they have to come around the corner before they get to it. We're extending a hard wire to the fire station, so it's be like Drury Square Fire Station, where they can, before entering the trucks, they can get the, set the lights in motion to clear out the intersection for them. Just to go through on the site plan, so this is the main entrance. Everybody will come in through here from that left, the dedicated left turn and the right turn in. Buses will come drop off at the front, and then proceed right back out. Parents pickup, drop-off will come in around to the south side of the building, drop off at the south entrance of the lobby, and then proceed out down their own exit driveway, back onto West Street and out through the building, or out through the, whether they're going left or right into the traffic. Just to, and so this is a big project, it's been going along really well. Fontaine's been moving along really well. I wanted to give you an update on where the whole project stands right now. Masonry is moving along. They're about 80% complete, that should be done in November. The blue area, you see up on top here, is metal panels, those are coming in next month. This is the south wing of the classroom wing, looking from, basically from the multipurpose field back on it. This one's, same area, looking back on the cafeteria area and the south, the south entrance to the lobby. And the sawtooth area is the windows into the cafeteria area. So we move around the west side of the site, this is the So we move around the west side of the site, this is the courtyard in between the two classroom wings, you can see the masonry's all the way around, and it's just the metal panels at the top, the windows have actually started arriving on site, so they'll be starting to be installed, if not already. Come around to the north side of the site, this is the main entrance coming up where the buses and main, all the vehicle traffic's coming in from, into the north entrance of the building. You can see with the gym on the left side. Now we move inside, so as Dr. Brunel had the rendering of the school lobby, this is the, looking, from the school lobby, looking back to the north, out and down, in the back here is West Street. You can see the skylights are all in, the light gauge framing's in, the interior windows are in, there's a, see, make out a little bit of a curved structure there, that's the media center that bows out and sticks out into that lobby space a little bit. The lower right-hand side is the entrances into the gym, the doors are there, the, there'll be troping display cases between the doors. As we turn around to the south side, you see that has the second floor balcony, there's a little tab here, it's a little hard to see in this picture, it's dark up there, but where the grand staircase will come down, so the work inside is really moving along here. This is just a typical classroom that's being framed out already with the mechanical systems going into it. This is the south, first floor, south corridor, or south classroom wing, which down at the end of this wing is all the technology classrooms, plus on this is where the main mechanical room is, so this is all the distribution piping and stuff from the mechanical rooms coming out and starting to head through the building, so you can see how much progress that's been, being made all the time in there. This is the second floor classroom wing, looking down, you can see we got the doorways are in for classrooms already, there's some of the heating piping and stuff, there's electrical happening, you know, throughout the, throughout the space. This, this is the gym, looking from the lobby, looking back to the back. The, these windows are open right now, but those will be similar to the skylight material, it's a translucent material, lets light in, but you can't really see through it. You'll see in the stack in the back are actually the windows that are coming, that are arriving on site to be installed in the building. And this is the stage area in the cafeteria auditorium. This is the last area of slab on grade to be placed. You can see the steps leading up to it, this will be, says the full presidium, it has a curtain, and then there's a operable partition that's going to be in place, so this, that backstage area all turns into the chorus room when it's not being used as a stage. In between that, there'll be practice rooms, and then behind that is the band room, it's a little washed out in the perspective here. And like I said, we're on schedule, on budget. We're quickly moving with the help of Fontaine and Skanska to turning over the keys in July for Dr. Brunel and the rest of the school department to have their hands full next summer with all the repositioning and moving into new school.
Thank you, Mr. Imzy. Onto Article Two. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend Article Two of the May 6, 2014 Annual Town Meeting as follows. Increase line item 015412-5480, minibus gas from $6,500 to $10,500. Increase line item 014222-581330, DPW hyphen landfill water slash gas monitoring from $0 to $13,000. Increase line item 015422-538602, youth commission contracted services from $110,000 to $117,500. Reduce line item 011992-5740, insurance and bonds from $687,000 to $672,000. Reduce line item 015432-5780, veterans relief from $63,000 to $58,000. Reduce line item 019101-5172, unemployment, unemployment compensation from $75,000 to $70,000, and further to approve an amended fiscal year 2015 budget for the town of Auburn of $52,341,748 or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Byland.
Mr. Moderator. William Byland, Precinct Two. Article Two, I move that the town meeting vote to amend Article Two of the May 6, 2014 Annual Town Meeting as follows. Increase line item 015412-5480, minibus gas from $6,500 to $10,500. Increase line item 014222-581330, DPW landfill water gas monitoring from $0 to $13,000. Increase line item 015422-538602, youth commission contracted services from $110,000 to $117,500. Reduce line item 011992-5740, insurance and bonds from $687,000 to $672,000. Reduce line item 015432-5780, veterans relief from $63,000 to $58,000. Reduce line item 019101-5172, unemployment compensation from $75,000 to $70,000, and further to approve an amended fiscal year 2015 budget for the town of Auburn of $52,341,748.
Is there a second? There is. Mr. Kazanovich.
Good evening, everyone. Ed Kazanovich, Chief Financial Officer, Assistant Town Manager. I have, I'll be brief. There are four overheads, I'd like to give town meeting members a financial update today as a, from the conclusion of our last annual town meeting, which was held on May 6, 2014. At the conclusion of that town meeting, we had a balance of $20,676 unobligated, not committed at that time because we didn't have the final state numbers. As a result of the final state numbers, as you can see in the slide in front of you and behind me, cherry sheet revenue actually came in higher than we estimated by $82,232, although on the cherry sheet charges and assessments, our assessments came in higher than projected. On the assessments, it was $95,909, and our offsets by way of library and school choice, we had an increase in our assessments of $25,185. If you boil all that state revenue and assessments down, we actually fell short by about $38,862. If you offset that against the amount we had available at the conclusion of town meeting, we actually started this town meeting down $18,186. There was a handout given to you when you checked in tonight that shows the net impact of the funding sources that is required for your consideration tonight. The amount required that will come out of general taxation or general fund revenues is roughly $7,623, which means we have to, we had to come up with an additional $25,809 of general fund revenue to meet the request before you tonight. As you can see, this is a schedule that we have to prepare in preparation of our tax recap sheet. The top line shows the action by town meeting in May, and below there, as you can see, Article Two, the net impact is actually a reduction in the operating budget by $500. Article Three, for homeless transportation, which Superintendent identified in her presentation, asks for this, an additional $623. Article Four is asking for $20,432 coming from an available fund we have identified, so that is not coming from general fund revenues. Article Eleven asks town meeting to approve a request of $7,500 to repair the floor and drains at the West Street Fire Station. Article Thirteen is an appropriation of $200,000 being funded through overlay surplus of $200,000, and Article Twenty is a funding article of $1,400 coming out of perpetual care for a cemetery backhoe bucket. As you can see at the bottom, total town meeting action would result in a budget of In addition to that, we're required to provide an appropriation for our cherry sheet assessments by law, overlay surplus, and our cherry sheet offsets, giving us a total annual budget What impact is that going to have on the tax rate for FY '15? Under Prop 2.5, we're allowed to add and raise to the budget $908,481. We're actually using about 55.93% of that, we're $508,099.41. That's what we're actually taxing to fund a FY '15 budget. We would be adding $400,000 to our excess levy, giving us an excess levy at this point of $3,350,000 and change. We would be taxing at 1.39 of a possible 2.5. I'd like to mention that out of that 1.39, we are actually, have an earmark of one-tenth of 2.5% for our capital needs, that's .25, and we're also funding our Bay Path obligation for the new school in this budget as well, which makes out about .17 of 2.5. So if you back that out, we're only charging less than 1% to the taxpayers to fund our FY '15 budget, that's 0.97 out of possible 2.5%. And this is the final slide. If you look at our five-year history on excess levy and the amount that we've taxed residents of this community, for '15, as you can see, we're charging 1.39 out of possible 2.5%. For '14, we charged 1.14% out of a possible 2.5. FY '13, 0%. FY '12, 0.78 out of a possible 2.5, and FY '11, 0.92 out of possible 2.5 allowed. If you take that collectively, over the five years, we're allowed to add to the budget 12.5%. We've only taxed out of 12.5, 4.23 out of that five-year period. So as you can see, we've built up our excess levy that's helped us out tremendously in our efforts to get a bond rating upgrade. I can tell you that we had a rating review in March, I mean in September, that resulted in a positive outlook to our rating. What does that mean for Auburn? That most likely will mean, if we continue this trend for '15, that we will get an upgrade to a AA2 from a AA3, which will save the taxpayers of this community thousands, maybe millions of dollars for our borrowing needs, especially at a time when we're going out to borrow for the Auburn Middle School. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, that concludes my presentation and update for tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions relative to Article Two at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Kazan. There is a question up back. Mr. Kazanovich, is that Carl Westerman? Problem is, I can't see anybody, but I'm guessing.
Carl Westman, Precinct One. I, maybe I didn't hear you right, but from what I heard, I believe I heard, you guys dropping the vets, money from the vets down?
We provide an annual appropriation based upon a three-to-five-year history. That line item in the Veterans Department, which is budgeted at, I believe, $68,000. The first quarter of the fiscal year, we're running at an annual expenditure of about $30-some-odd thousand. So if that were to hold true, we would close out the year with a $40,000 surplus in that account. Certainly, things can change overnight. We believe that $5,000 is just a small piece of a surplus that we believe is going to be available year-round.
I don't know, I don't agree with you thinking on that, because to me, the vets deserve what was ever appropriated.
It's, that does not mean we would deny anyone a benefit if that need should come in. If that need should come in, we would have to find the money in order to meet that obligation. Those benefits are paid in accordance with Mass General Law. We, that does not mean we would deny any benefit to a vet that's entitled to it.
No, no, what you're saying then, no vets are going to be turned down?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? There being one, all those in favor of Article Two, please signify by raising their hand. All those opposed, it is voted. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $623 from general fund revenues to the Auburn School Department operating budget for fiscal year 2015 to fund transportation costs for homeless and/or unanticipated transportation for other students to their educational programs or act on anything relative thereto. Yes, Mr. Mitchell?
Mr. Moderator, Jeff Mitchell, Precinct Three. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $623 from general fund revenues to the Auburn School Department operating budget for fiscal year 2015 to fund transportation costs for homeless and/or unanticipated transportation for other students to their educational programs.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Three signify by raising their hand. All those opposed, it is voted. Article Four. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate a sum of $20,432.61 from available funds hyphen school restitution, account number 263002, for the addition of new playground equipment and renovation of the current playground equipment at the Pakachog School to ready it for K-2 students who will be educated there, beginning in the 2015-16 school year, due to the reconfiguration of elementary schools once the new Auburn Middle School is opened or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Kosky.
Mr. Moderator, Paul Kosky, Precinct One. Article Four. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate a sum of $20,432.61 from available funds school restitution, account number 263002, for the addition of new playground equipment and the renovation of current playground equipment at the Pakachog School to ready it for K-2 students who will be educated there, beginning in the 2015-2016 school year, due to the reorganization of elementary schools once the new Auburn Middle School is opened.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, is that a question or is that a question?
Did this go out for bid? And can the, what's going to happen with the playground equipment from Mary D in the transaction of the move?
Dr. Brunel.
Just seems like a lot, $20,000.
This actually, being under 25, we need to get three quotes, which have been secured. This is to lower the equipment that is there so that it will be the right height for the students. It will be to add swings, and we will be working with the Department of Public Works to bring some of the equipment from Mary D to Pakachog School. But right now, the, the size of the equipment that's there would not be safe, quite honestly, for K-2 students, so this is to lower it.
And what will happen to the equipment that's there? Will that go dispersed to the other schools?
No, they're actually going to use that No, they're actually going to use that same equipment and lower the size of it. It's to have a company that come in that can do that, to reduce the size of it. So rather than the climbing apparatus being high, it would be appropriate for students 8 to 10 years old, this is going to be appropriate for students in the 5 to 8 range.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 4 signify by raising their hands. All those opposed, it is voted. Article 5. Now, just so you all know, we are running into a whole group of articles that are going to require a two-thirds vote. Why? Because they're amending the CIP articles of previous years. The CIP article has borrowing in it every year, and whenever we have an article that requires borrowing, we have to have a two-thirds vote. So that's why our councillors tonight will have a chance to exercise their talents. All right. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend CIP program Article 4 of the May 1st, 2008 annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of $73,833.57 from the school rehabilitation account and add $73,833.57 for the replacement of the roof and boiler at Auburn Middle School and a roof replacement at Bryn Mawr School as part of the MSBA accelerated repair program or act on anything relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Elizabeth Johnson, Precinct 1. I move that the town meeting vote to amend CIP program Article 4 of the May 1st, 2008 annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of $73,833.57 from the school rehabilitation account and add $73,833.57 for the replacement of the roof and boiler at the Auburn Middle School and a roof replacement at the Bryn Mawr School as part of the MSBA accelerated repair program.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, oh, no, seeing none, so because it's two-thirds. All those opposed to Article 5, please raise your hand. Seeing no one opposed, all those in favor, it is a unanimous vote. Article 6. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend CIP program Article 4 of the May 7, 2009 annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of funds of $30,000 for the Auburn Middle School and $100,000 for the Packerchog School and add $130,000 for the replacement of the roof and boiler at Auburn Middle School and a roof replacement at Bryn Mawr School as part of the MSBA accelerated repair program or act on anything relative thereto.
I'm Arthur Plant, Precinct 4. I move that the town meeting vote to amend the IPC program Article 4 of the May 7, 2009 annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of funds of $30,000 for the Auburn Middle School and $100,000 for the Packerchog School and add $130,000 for the replacement of the roof and boiler at the Auburn Middle School and a roof replacement at Bryn Mawr School as part of the MSBA accelerated repair program.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those, again, this is a two-thirds, all those opposed to Article 6, please signify by raising your hand. Seeing no one in opposition, all those in favor of Article 6, it is unanimous vote. Article 7. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend CIP program Article 3 of the May 6, 2010 annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of funds of $56,000, account number 302011-581145, for the Bryn Mawr School, and $95,000, account number 302011-581151, for the Central Office, and $95,000, account number 302011-581148, for the Packerchog School, and add $246,300 for the replacement of the roof and boiler at Auburn Middle School and a roof replacement at Bryn Mawr School as part of the MSBA accelerated repair program or act on anything relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Bruce Hopper, Precinct 1. Article 7. I move that the town meeting vote to amend CIP program Article 3 of the May 6, 2010 annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of funds of $56,000, account number 302011-581145, for the Bryn Mawr School, and $95,000, account number 302011-581151, for the Central Office, and $95,300, account number 302011-581148, for the Packerchog School, and add $246,300 for the replacement of the roof and boiler at Auburn Middle School and a roof replacement at Bryn Mawr School as part of the MSBA accelerated repair program.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those who are not in favor of this article signify by raising their Seeing none, all those in favor of this article signify by raising your hand. Article 8. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend CIP program Article 3 of the May 5, 2011 annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of funds of $57,613, account number 302012-581245, for the Central Office, and add $57,613 for the replacement of the roof and boiler at Auburn Middle School and a roof replacement at Bryn Mawr School as part of the MSBA accelerated repair program or act on anything relative thereto. Yes.
Ellen Ganley, Precinct 4. I move that the town meeting vote to amend CIP program Article 3 of the May 5, 2011 annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of funds of $57,613, account number 302012-581245, for the Central Office, and add $57,613 for the replacement of the roof and boiler at Auburn Middle School and a roof replacement at Bryn Mawr School as part of the MSBA accelerated repair program.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? I don't see any questions. Oh, excuse me, ma'am. You have to see us. Okay, seeing no questions, and again, a two-thirds vote required, all those opposed to this article signify by raising your hand. Seeing none opposed, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. It is voted unanimously. Article 9. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend CIP program Article 3 of the May 1st, 2012 annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of funds of $175,000, account number 302013-581354, for the Bryn Mawr School, and $150,000, account number 302013-581357, for the Packerchog School, and $100,000, account number 302013-581359, for the Auburn High School, and $55,000, account number 302013-581360, for the Central Office, and add $480,000 for the replacement of the roof and boiler at Auburn Middle School and a roof replacement at Bryn Mawr School as part of the MSBA accelerated repair program or act on anything relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Lee Ann Gibbrey, Precinct 3. Article 9. I move that the town meeting vote to amend CIP program Article 3 of the May 1st, 2012 annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of funds of $175,000, account number 302013-581354, for the Bryn Mawr School, and $150,000, account number 302013-581357, for the Packerchog School, and $100,000, account number 302013-581359, for the Auburn High School, and $55,000, account number 302013-581360, for the Central Office, and add $480,000 for the replacement of the roof and boiler at Auburn Middle School and a roof replacement at Bryn Mawr School as part of the MSBA accelerated repair program.
Thank you. Is there a second? A second, there is a second. Again, a two-thirds vote is required. All those in opposition to this article, please signify by raising your hand. Seeing no one in opposition, all those in favor of this article signify by raising your hand. It is voted unanimously. Okay, Article 10. Well, I guess we're going to have to do both of us, have to read it. I'm sorry, it should be something like as read or as printed, but anyway. Article 10. To see if the town meeting will vote to approve the expenditure of the summer money from the appropriation for construction of the Auburn Middle School as approved by town meeting pursuant to its vote on Article 17 of the May 2013 annual town meeting or by borrowing or otherwise for the acquisition by purchase eminent domain or otherwise of certain parcels of land, including temporary and permanent easements located on West Street in Auburn identified as parcels 2C and TE7 owned by Michael A. Perro, trustee of 772 Southridge Street Realty Trust, parcels 3C PE1, PUE1, and TE8 owned by Massachusetts Electric, parcel 4C and TE9 owned by Commonwealth of Massachusetts Mass. Highway Department, parcel TE1 owned by Deborah A. Dubois and Dana J. Dubois, parcel TE2 owned by Thomas J. Day, parcel TE3 owned by Gregory Hadad, parcel TE4 owned by Thich V. Dao and Julia Endao, parcels TE5 and TE6 owned by Dean W. Haas Jr. All as further shown on a plan prepared by Vanasse, Hangan, Brustland Incorporated dated September 17, 2014 entitled Plan and Profile of West Street in the Town of Auburn, Worcester County Preliminary Right-of-Way, all for the purpose of altering, redesigning, and widening West Street as required by the Auburn Planning Board Site Plan Approval for the Auburn Middle School Project, including costs incidental and related thereto, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take such land pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 79, and to take any and all other action necessary to carry out said takings or act on anything relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Greg Bowling, Precinct 4. I move that the town meeting vote to approve the expenditure of $4,406 from the appropriation for construction at the Auburn Middle School as approved by town meeting pursuant to its vote on Article 17 of the May 2013 annual town meeting or by borrowing or otherwise for the acquisition by purchase eminent domain or otherwise of certain parcels of land, including temporary and permanent easements located on West Street in Auburn identified as parcels 2C and TE7 owned by Michael A. Perro, trustee of 722 Southridge Street Realty Trust, parcels 3C PE1, PUE1, and TE owned by Massachusetts Electric, parcel 4C and TE9 owned by Commonwealth of Massachusetts Mass. Highway Department, parcel TE1 owned by Deborah A. Dubois and Dana J. Dubois, parcel TE2 owned by Thomas J. Day, parcel TE3 owned by Gregory Hadad, parcel TE4 owned by Thich V. Dao and Julia Endao, parcels TE5 and TE6 owned by Dean W. Haas Jr. All as further shown on a plan prepared by Vanasse, Hangan, Brustland Incorporated dated September 17, 2014 entitled Plan and Profile of West Street in the Town of Auburn, Worcester County Preliminary Right-of-Way, all for the purpose of altering, redesigning, and widening West Street as required by the Auburn Planning Board Site Plan Approval for the Auburn Middle School Project, including costs incidental and related thereto, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take such land pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 79, and to take any and all other action necessary to carry out said takings.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions?
Bruce Hopper, Precinct 1. Is there a dollar amount?
I think the dollar, if I'm not mistaken, he's in the, when he read it today, it's proved expenditure of $4,406 on the, that's what the article said. What I, that's what the motion said. When I read the article, there was not a dollar amount in. The dollar amount is $4,406. Am I correct, Mr. Casanova? I am correct.
So just $4,000?
$4,400.
Thank you.
Chump change. Okay, you're welcome. Any other questions? Yes.
Barbara Granger, Precinct 3. Mr. Moderator, I'm wondering if we need to be more specific than saying by borrowing or otherwise. Shouldn't an article be very specific as to what we're going to do?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. It's the way the microphone.
Am I too close to the microphone?
Yeah. Mr. Captain, the question was, we need to be more specific than we're going to say by borrowing or otherwise. Mr. Captain.
This article has been reviewed by bond counsel. This actually authorizes the expenditure of $4,406 against an authorization already approved by this town meeting. That authorization was for $44.5 million to furnish, equip, the Auburn Middle School. We had to further define any land takings as an amendment to that original article. Actually refers back to that article as passed by town meeting. So that money already is in place to be spent. We had to define the purpose.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in opposition to this article signify by raising their hand. Seeing, is that a hand raised in opposition? No. Seeing no one in opposition, all those in favor of this article signify by raising your hand. The article is voted unanimously. Okay, we're off the two-thirds bandwagon for a while. Article 11. See if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $7,500 from general fund revenues to install floor drains on the apparatus floor at Fire Station 2 on West Street or act on anything relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Article 11, I move that-
Excuse me, you have to identify yourself.
I'm sorry?
You have to identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Carolyn Corvo, Precinct 1.
Thank you.
I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $7,500 from general fund revenues to install floor drains on the apparatus floor at Fire Station 2 on West Street.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of this article signify by raising your hand. It is voted. Okay. Article 12. To see if the town, oh, hey, back to two-thirds. To see if the town- To see if the town meeting will vote to amend CIP Article Three of the May First, two thousand twelve Annual Town Meeting as follows. Delete the balance of funds of forty thousand dollars, account number three oh two oh one three hyphen five eight one three four eight for new bath fixtures, and add twenty thousand dollars for bathroom renovations, and twenty thousand dollars for handicap access improvements, or act on anything relative thereto. Yes.
Mr. Moderator, Michael Marin, Precinct Three. Article Twelve, I move that the town meeting vote to amend CIP Article Three of the May One, two thousand twelve Annual Town Meeting as follows. Delete the balance of funds of forty thousand dollars, account number three zero two zero one three dash five eight one three four eight for the new bath fixtures, and add twenty thousand dollars for bathroom renovations, and twenty thousand dollars for handicap access improvements.
Or act on anything, okay, I'm sorry, that's, oh, yes, I'm sorry, yeah. Okay, is there a second? There is a second, yeah, just one more. In case anybody wonders what this is for, it's for the senior center. All right, are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in opposition to this article signify by raising their hand. No. Seeing none in opposition, all those in favor of this article signify by raising their hand. Voted unanimously, thank you. Here we go. Article Thirteen, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred thousand dollars from overlay surplus to the stabilization fund or act on anything relative thereto.
Elizabeth Johnson, Precinct One.
Yes.
I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred thousand dollars from the overlay surplus to the stabilization fund.
Okay, is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Yes.
Greg Bowling, Precinct Four. I just wanted to verify, we took about half a million dollars, I believe, out in the spring meeting for the replacement of the tower truck, and this is putting two hundred thousand back in then, so we don't need the full five hundred thousand that we had moved in, is that correct?
Well, at the end of June thirtieth, we had a balance of two point, actually, two million, two hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven forty-seven, sixty-four. Four hundred and fifty thousand was approved by town meeting as an offset to the purchase or acquisition of the new fire truck, giving us a current balance of about one point eight million, one million, eight hundred thirty-seven thousand, seven forty-seven, sixty-four. This two hundred replenishes a portion of the four fifty.
Are there any other questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by raising their hand. It is voted. All those opposed, I have to watch that at the end, okay, it's voted. And here we go, Article Thirteen, back to, fourteen, I'm sorry, Article Fourteen, I just wrote there, yeah. Article Fourteen, we're back to a two-thirds, sir. All right. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend CIP Article Three of the May Fifth, two thousand eleven Annual Town Meeting as follows. Delete the balance of five thousand fifty dollars, account number three oh two oh one two hyphen five eight one three three two for highway roof, and add install ten-foot power angle plow on highway backhoe or act on anything relative thereto. Yes.
Mr. Moderator, Joan Calverly, Precinct Four. I move that the town meeting vote to amend CIP Article Three of the May Five, two thousand eleven Annual Town Meeting as follows. Delete the balance of five million, fifty, five, oh, five thousand fifty.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Five thousand fifty, pardon me, account three zero two zero one two dash five eight one three three two for highway roof, and add install ten-foot power angle plow on highway backhoe.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, all those in favor, oh, no, we have to do it, I'm sorry. All those in opposition to this article signify by raising their hand. Seeing none in opposition, all those in favor of this article, unanimously voted. Okay, Article Fifteen, back to a majority. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend Article Nineteen of the October twenty-nine, two thousand thirteen Special Town Meeting as follows. Delete the balance of nineteen hundred dollars, account number zero six hyphen four two two hyphen five eight one four one four for two Cyrus Close Spreader Control Systems, and add install ten-foot power angle plow on highway backhoe or act on anything relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Phil Joyenfeld, Precinct Four. I move that the town meeting vote to amend Article Nineteen of the October twenty-nine, two thousand thirteen Special Town Meeting as follows. Delete the balance of one thousand nine hundred dollars, account number zero six dash four two 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 dash five eight one four one four for two Cyrus Close Spreader Control Systems, and add install ten-foot power angle plow on highway backhoe.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Yes, Mr. Loges.
Danny Loges, Precinct Four. What is the total cost of this ten-foot plow? I'm looking at Articles fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
Is there somebody here to answer? Mr. Coyle is approaching.
And how old is the backhoe that this is going on?
Again, Mr. Coyle has all answers.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I'll give you a brief overview on Article fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, because they're all related to one another.
Okay. Thank you.
On Article fourteen with the install ten-foot power angle plow on highway backhoe, the total cost of that is eight thousand five hundred. So a number of these articles will actually fund that purchase. It's actually Article fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen portions will come out of each. In addition, we also, under Article sixteen, it's retrofit sewer pickup with expandable plow, that's six thousand one hundred dollars. And then Article seventeen is retrofit highway F-550 with front and wing plow setup, that's thirty-five thousand nine hundred. All of these articles are re-appropriating existing funds, there's no new funds being added to any of these items. And the reason for these particular articles is this past summer, we had three of our six-wheel dump trucks that were sidelined. So currently, we're down three large trucks. So DPW is looking at a way to get us through this next winter, and we will have a backhoe with a plow attached, which we typically don't do, although we feel as though this would be a good use of the backhoe. The exact age of that backhoe, I don't have that with me this evening, I can certainly get that from Mr. Loges, but if I was to venture a guess, I would say it's probably around ten years of age. But all of our backhoes are currently in good operating condition, so I don't feel as though that's an issue. So we felt as though these purchases would get us through one winter, and we're currently waiting for a six-wheel dump truck that has been purchased through CIP funds, but unfortunately, we don't expect that truck to be avail, excuse me, to be available until probably winter is over. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions that town meeting members may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle.
Mr. Coyle commented on Article seventeen. Do I need to wait until that article is brought up for questions?
Yes, I think so. I think, yeah, otherwise, we're going to get all screwed up, yeah. Okay, Article Fifteen, so, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Fifteen signify by raising their hand. All those opposed, it is voted. Okay. Article Sixteen, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend Article Twenty-One of the October twenty-three, two thousand twelve Special Town Meeting as follows. Delete the balance of thirty-five hundred and fifty dollars, account number zero six four two 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 hyphen five eight one three two six for two six-wheel dump trucks, and add install ten-foot power angle plow on highway backhoe and retrofit sewer pickup with an expandable plow or act on anything relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Ralph Capaldi, Precinct Two. I move that the town meeting vote to amend Article Twenty-One of the October twenty-third, two thousand twelve Special Town Meeting as follows. Delete the balance of three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, account number zero six four two 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 hyphen five eight one three two six for two six-wheel dump trucks, and add install ten-foot power angle plow on highway backhoe and retrofit sewer pickup with an expendable plow, expandable plow.
Expandable, okay. Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, all those in favor of Article Sixteen signify by raising their hand. All those opposed, Article Sixteen is voted. Article Seventeen, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend CIP Article Three of the May First, two thousand twelve Annual Town Meeting as follows. Delete the balance of forty thousand dollars, account number zero six four two 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 hyphen five eight one two oh five for loader lease purchase, and add retrofit sewer pickup with an expandable plow and retrofit highway F-550 with front and wing plow setup or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Proudie.
Mr. Moderator, Ron Proudie, Precinct One. I move that the town meeting vote to amend CIP Article Three of the May First, two thousand twelve Annual Town Meeting as follows. Delete the balance of forty thousand dollars from count number zero six four two 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 hyphen five eight one two zero five for loader lease purchase, and add retrofit sewer pickup with an expandable plow and retrofit highway F-550 with front and wing plow setup.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions, Mr. Loges?
How old is this piece of equipment? And is it going to withstand a wing plow? These trucks are not designed, as far as I know, to take wing plows on them.
Well, again, you're, I think you're asking Mr. Coyle, as Mr. Coyle is behind you.
Is this truck going to be able to take the abuse of this?
Mr. Moderator, this is actually a new truck that was purchased last year. The F-550s in some of the communities are actually running these pickup trucks with the wings, so essentially, you'll have equivalent to having two plows on the street by having this larger truck with the wing. I can say the town of Holden is only purchasing their F-550s, I believe, with wings, and they are designed for that load. So this would retrofit that newer truck, again, that was purchased last year, and at that time, the CIP was not sufficient for us to be able to purchase that truck with a wing.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those opposed to this article, raise their hand. Okay, since we have opposition, would the counters please get up and count?
So this time, we'll go with the motion table first. All motion table this article, please raise your hand and hold it up. All opposed, please raise your hand.
The article is voted seventy-three in favor, one opposed. Article Eighteen, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend CIP Article Three of the May Seven, two thousand thirteen Annual Town Meeting as follows. Delete fourteen thousand dollars, account number three oh two oh one four hyphen five eight one four two eight for slope riding mower, and add five thousand six hundred dollars, five thousand six hundred dollars for a walk behind mower, replacing a nineteen ninety-nine mower, and eight thousand four hundred dollars to be used for fencing around the playground at Rocketland or act on anything relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Mary Ellen Paquette, Precinct Two. I move that the town meeting vote to amend CIP Article Three of the May Seven, two thousand thirteen Annual Town Meeting as follows. Delete fourteen thousand dollars, account number three zero two zero one four hyphen five eight one four two eight for slope riding mower, and add five thousand six hundred dollars for a walk behind mower, replacing a nineteen ninety-nine mower, and eight thousand four hundred dollars to be used for fencing around the playground at Rocketland.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Yes, Bill.
Bill Westlin from Precinct One, I'm just going to ask for, I guess, definition. A year or so ago, we voted fourteen thousand dollars for a needed slope riding mower. Apparently, we didn't buy the slope riding mower, and we're going to now vote on a walk behind mower, replacing that. And then, I'd like a little definition as far as the fencing around the playground, Rockland, Rocketland, which has been there for quite a while, and I'm not sure if we're making improvements on that. And one last thing for Mr. Coyle. I slept through Article Two, but there's a water gas monitoring, which was a new line, which was zero, and we just voted thirteen thousand dollars for that. I'd like to understand what's going on. What, yeah, what's going on with this water gas monitoring for thirteen thousand dollars? Thank you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Coyle? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, on Article Eighteen, this is for the Parks Department. The slope riding mower was not purchased this year, and prior, before that was purchased, we actually had a walk behind mower, which was at that time in relatively good condition, actually failed. So we were at a point where we felt as though the walk behind mower was more of a priority than the slope riding mower, and additionally, we'd also received several concerns from residents regarding the safety of the children at Rocketland with the parking lot being adjacent to the playground. So we felt as though- So we felt as though those two items were more of a priority than the slope mower, and we felt as though we could do without the slope riding mower. And our priorities would be to replace the walk behind mower and also provide the fencing around the park as well. In regards to, just because those are more of a priority to us. In regards to the water and gas monitoring at the landfill, this is something that's done on an annual basis. The cost is approximately $20,000 per year. Typically, that's been handled in an outside article. I think there's a move towards having this item in the annual budget and speaking with the administration and realizing that there's additional monitoring that needs to be done between now and July. The $13,000 would carry us through to July 1, and next year, when budget season begins, we will then roll in a number to cover us annually for that expense. But it is required by DEP, and we do submit quarterly reports for the water and gas samples that are taken.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Okay.
Any, Loges, Precinct 4. Is there a possibility that a partial fence can go from the tennis court up towards the skating rink with a break in it versus fencing in the whole playground, isolating it from the fields?
Mr. Coyle, I guess.
We can look at that, the $14,000. Our main goal is to fence off the area between the parking lot and the playground. The $14,000 is probably not sufficient to completely go around the entire area of the playground. Again, our priority is along the parking lot. So we can look at, and I can speak with Mr. Loges on what exactly his particular concern is out in the field, and we can entertain that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all, again, this is two-thirds, all those who are opposed to this article signify by raising their hand. Seeing opposition, counters up. Okay. Now, all those in favor of this article, please signify by raising your hand.
Thirty in favor.
I just want to make sure we're counting the town meeting members.
All of all those in opposition, please signify by raising your hand.
Four.
The article is voted 74 to 4. Article 19. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend Article 29 of the May 5, 2011 annual town meeting line item mapping for fiscal year 12 from the Expendable Trust Cemetery Perpetual Care Account 064912-581124 with $998.50 and for cement for the Cemetery Colombarium Foundation or act on anything relative thereto. Yes.
Mr. Moderator, Alan Cooper, Precinct 2. Article 19. I move that the town meeting vote to amend Article 29 of the May 5, 2011 annual town meeting line item mapping for FY12 from the Expendable Trust Cemetery Perpetual Care Account 064912-581124 with $998.50 for cement for the Cemetery Colombarium Foundation.
Is there a second? There is a second. You'll have to sign that, please, Mr. Cooper. Yeah, are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 19 signify by raising their hand. All those opposed? It is voted. Article 20. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $1,400 from the Expendable Trust Cemetery Perpetual Care Account for the purchase of a cemetery backhoe bucket or act on anything relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Joe Martin, Precinct 2. Article 20. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $1,400 from the Expendable Trust Cemetery Perpetual Care Account for the purchase of a cemetery backhoe bucket.
Okay. Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 20 signify by raising their hand. All those opposed? It is voted. Article 21. And, just a moment, please, Mr. Frost. To see if the town meeting will vote to accept the remaining portion, no, no, I'm sorry. To see if the town meeting will vote to grant the town manager authority to research, develop, and participate in a contract or contracts to aggregate the electricity load of the residents and businesses in the town and for other related electrical services independently or in joint action with other municipalities, retaining the right of individual residents and businesses to opt out of the aggregation or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Frost.
Ken Frost, Precinct 4. I move that the town meeting vote to grant the town manager authority to research, develop, and participate in a contract or contracts to aggregate the electricity load of the residents and businesses of the town and for other related electrical services independently or in joint action with other municipalities, retaining the right of individual residents and businesses to opt out of the aggregation.
Is there a second? There is a second. And before we get to questions, I note that we do have a visitor, if you can hear me. State Representative Paul Frost has come to join us for a few moments. Mr. Frost. Okay, there he is. All right. Are there any questions on Article 21? Seeing none. Am I seeing one? I'm seeing one.
Paul Plutukas, Precinct 1. Is the major goal of this article to save the citizens and businesses of Auburn money on their monthly electric bills?
Good evening. Yes, that is the intent of this article. It's to look into different and various municipal aggregators to see if we can negotiate a good price for electricity for the residents of Auburn. The town administration itself has already negotiated a contract. We signed it approximately four weeks ago to enter into a three-year agreement to save on the town side electricity. We negotiated a rate of approximately 10 cents per kilowatt hour, which is significantly less than the estimated 24 cents that National Grid would be charging as of January 1. We'd like the opportunity to do something similar for the residents, if possible. We would still have to follow DPU guidelines and follow the state's DOE guidelines for participating in this process, but we didn't want to miss out on the opportunity and have to wait until town meeting in May, should an opportunity come up earlier than that to enter into an agreement and lock in at a good rate. Thank you.
Thank you. And by the way, we do have somebody here this evening who's come in, who does have some knowledge of this, if necessary. Adam Burney, although he's no longer working with the town, has come this evening in case we need his informed knowledge. So, thank you, Mr. Burney. Yes, is that a question? That is a question. Got to raise a, you know, you're Doc, and it's Doc, and I can't see. I'm sorry.
Doug Nelson, Precinct 2. I think in reading about this in the paper or wherever I happen to see it, is this also going to allow us to opt out or opt in at various points? And does this put the town in direct competition with National Grid? Or does this allow the town to choose where the sources of the power is generated, things like that? You know, whether it be Pilgrim or Seabrook or other places? So, just, you know, what part of the power? Is it the generation, the transmission, distribution, or whatever? It would just be nice to have a little bit of background on that.
Okay, Mr. Burney is approaching now with knowledge. Good evening, Adam.
Good evening. So, direct competition with National Grid, no. It is an opt-out program. There's a 30-day window after the aggregation process has been completed where every mailing address in town receives, you know, the little three-by-five card that everybody throws away, and it says you have the option to opt out. So if you don't return that within the stated time period, you're in, and you're locked into that rate. The town, it's not so much choosing where the power comes from, and it's not a discount on the distribution. National Grid owns the poles, they own the wires, they own all the transmission infrastructure. It's the actual energy that you're aggregating and getting a discount on. So what happens is, there's 7,000 homes and, you know, another thousand businesses. So there's 8,000 theoretical customers in the town of Auburn. That's a very small pool. So what the companies that the town manager will speak with and sign a contract with will do is they will take Auburn and half a dozen or a dozen other communities and get a pool of 50, 60, 150,000 customers together, and they go out and they go to the market. And they say, here's my pool of customers, who's going to give me the best rate for a fixed period of time? Then they sign. So it's really, you're playing the energy market on usually a six-to-12-month period, sometimes 24, I think it depends on forecast. So hopefully, that kind of nails it down.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Are there any other questions? And thank you, yes, Mr. Plutukas? Adam?
I thought I got away.
In the Alternative Energy and Wind Turbine Committee, we've been studying this for a couple of years. And did I understand that we're not in competition with this, with National Grid?
Mr. Burney?
No, not, I mean, for the power, yes, but it's not a direct competition. If National Grid can provide the lower price than whatever other entity is providing the energy, then they would be providing the energy. They're still going to get their piece of the pie on the infrastructure. They're still going to get, and Mr. Plutukas, you're aware of this, they talk about the bill as the two-part, the top and the bottom, top being distribution, bottom being energy. National Grid is still getting their top-of-the-bill revenue for distribution costs. So they may not be getting as much money, but they're not totally losing all revenue.
Okay, thank you. Yes, another question up back?
I had a follow-up question, but I don't know if I have to wait for Mr. Frost.
Well, this will be a third now.
Well, it's up to you.
All right, briefly.
When the aggregation companies, whether it be Cape Light or the Hampshire Council of Governments and Western Mass, which has over 200,000 customers, ask, put out their bids, they seem to be in direct competition with National Grid because they're not going to sign a, are they going to sign a contract for less or more than, or the same as National Grid? My question.
Okay. Is there an answer?
I don't know what answer satisfies that question. It seemed more of a statement of economics than a question. I guess the reality is that the DPU process gives the town the ability to designate their energy provider for residents and businesses as opposed to you live in this community, National Grid services that community, you're stuck with whatever they give you.
Mr. Frost?
Ken Frost, Precinct 4. Is it possible that a resident, then, since we're going in competition, the town's going to go into competition with other energy providers? I'm not including National Grid because they just pass their electricity off at their cost to the customer. So can the resident opt in, decide to opt out again, and then come back in again? Because, say, a resident could opt out, go with another provider besides National Grid because there's providers out there, and then say where their cost goes higher than the town's, can they opt into the town?
Well, I think he answered that, Ken, but go ahead, Mr. Burney.
Generally, what happens with that situation is if you opt in originally, you're in for X period of time. It's usually six months. If you, if, once you opt out, then you can't come back in for another fixed period of time. That's usually based on what company the town has aggregated with, who's doing their backend work. The town itself is not, in most cases, out on the energy market. They partner with an energy conglomerate who takes, again, a multiple of towns, puts them together, and those folks usually have a fixed period of time within their contract so that they don't get people hopping in and out and that they have a fixed amount of customers.
So where you're going to go with, it's basically an existing energy company now that's offering electricity at a fixed rate other than National Grid?
No. It's a, the company that the town is contracting with is a servicer. So they actually go and they're, in essence, a middleman. They go and they go to the energy market, and they are constantly purchasing and putting out the, whatever number of customers they have onto that market, looking for someone to bid on a per-kilowatt-hour cost for that customer.
So they still going to guarantee, will guarantee a fixed rate for an extended period of time? Or will that change as the energy market changes on a daily basis?
Sure.
Yes, Ms. Jacobson.
If I may, I just want to clarify, just so I'm clear here, there are two issues. One is not on the town meeting warrant tonight, and I believe that's perhaps what you're asking about. The contract that the town just signed for its energy was a fixed rate for three years. However, what we're looking at to do here, and I just want to be clear, this is to research, develop, and participate. So we have not done all of the research yet. We are in the process of identifying municipal aggregators that we'd like to work with. We are talking to the Department of Energy Resources at the state. Kelly Brown has provided us with some information. There is a list on their website, actually, anyone can look on it and see, and you can look and see what other communities have done, what companies they've gone with. We have suggested to the chair of the Alternative Energy and Wind Turbine Committee, Mr. Plutukas, that the committee hold meetings and bring in some municipal aggregators that the town may identify that have been in partnership with other communities and have a successful track record. We'd like to We'd like the committee to bring them in. These meetings are televised, everybody can hear about them. The companies can present how they operate, what they do, and answer any questions. The committee did have the Hampshire Council of Governments in recently to answer, to try to answer some questions. They're still in the process of their DPU approvals, don't have them quite yet, but they're welcome to come back in again as well, in addition to some other companies that we've identified, including Good Energy and, I believe, I'm sorry, it's on the tip of my tongue, a company out of Marlboro that we're reaching out to as well. We were hoping through the committee that we could bring in three to four different municipal aggregators to answer questions from the committee, and I'm certain that the committee chair would be happy to entertain questions from the public as well. This is to benefit all the residents of Auburn, so we encourage people to watch this, encourage you to ask questions, and we're looking to the committee to make a recommendation to the town administration as to which aggregator the community, the residents feel we should be looking at. Based on that, we then have to follow a DPU process that includes a number of different steps. So, this is very far down the road, but we wanted to get started now with energy prices increasing. So, we may not have all of the answers as far as what the rates are going to be and what they provide and what services, but the questions we'll be asking are management ability, capacity to take us on, ability to manage multiple accounts, is there a cost to the resident that's added into that bottom line to manage these accounts? Is there not a cost to that? So, there are a lot of questions that have to be asked. This is really getting us started in that process. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of this article signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? The article is voted. And thank you, Mr. Burney, for coming in. Article twenty-two. To see if the town meeting will vote to accept the remaining portion of Westview Street from Station zero plus zero zero to the end, Station two plus sixty-seven point one oh, as shown on a plan prepared by Cullen Engineering Company entitled, Westview Street, Auburn, Massachusetts, dated August seventh, nineteen sixty-seven, and recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds Plan Book three thirteen, Plan eighty-nine. The total length of Westview Street would be approximately six hundred and thirty-one feet or act on anything relative thereto. Yes.
Mr. Moderator, Dan Diamond, Precinct Five. I move that the town meeting vote to accept the remaining portion of Westview Street from Station zero plus zero zero to the end, Station two plus sixty-seven point one zero, as shown on a plan prepared by Cullen and Engineering Company Incorporated entitled, Westview Street, Auburn, Massachusetts, dated August seventh, nineteen sixty-seven, and recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds Plan Book three one three, Plan eighty-nine. The total length of Westview Street would be approximately six hundred and thirty-one feet.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of this article, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? It is voted. Article twenty-two, twenty-three, I should say. Article twenty-three? Ah, yes. To see if the town meeting will vote to accept the entire length of Santum Street from South Street to the terminus, approximately fourteen hundred and eighty feet, as shown on a plan prepared by Cullen and Engineering Co., Inc., entitled, Definitive Subdivision Plan of Land Owned by James D. and Stephanie D. Lundgren, Santum Street Extension, Auburn, Massachusetts, dated thirty, August two thousand and six, and recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds Plan Book eight fifty-one, Plan fifty-five, or act on anything relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Dan Diamond, again, Precinct Five. I move that the town meeting vote to accept the entire length of Santum Street from South Street to terminus, approximately one thousand four hundred and eighty feet, as shown on a plan prepared by Cullen and Engineering Company Incorporated entitled, Definitive Subdivision Plan of Land Owned by James D. and Stephanie D. Lundgren, Santum Street Extension, Auburn, Massachusetts, dated August thirtieth, two thousand and six, and recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds Plan Book eight fifty-one, Plan fifty-five.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of this article signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? It is voted. I would now entertain a motion to dissolve this meeting without, thanks. A second? And all in favor? All right. Thank you.